You're on record.
All right, the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, October 17, 2022 is opening at 7:30 PM. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser.
Here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the general public that have any items that they wish to bring to our attention that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we move to the resolutions. All right, does everybody have the packets and had a chance to look at the resolutions? Should we go through these one at a time or all together?
You can do them all together.
All right, is there somebody willing to move the three resolutions listed in our material? Some of them?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the resolutions, application 22:534, application 21:526, and application 22:530.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Napolitano, thank you. If you would call the roll, please, Nora?
Barbario.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
There we go, we've done the resolutions. Now we move on to our agenda. And we have just one item on our agenda tonight, application 22:529, Woodmont Senior Living LLC, 79 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 01, Lot 1, Zone ROL, preliminary and final major site plan with sea variance, major soil moving, to construct a three-story, 150-unit senior living building.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the board and board professionals.
And the public as well. My name is John Inglesino. I'm a partner with the law firm of Inglesino Webster. We're located at 600 Precipiny Road, right here in Precipiny. We represent the applicant this evening, Woodmont Senior Living LLC, regarding this application for preliminary and final site plan approval and major soil permit removal with design exceptions, bulk variance, relief for property located at 79 Interpace Parkway, otherwise known as Lot 1 and Block 136.01 on the tax map of Precipiny Troy Hills. The property is in the research office and laboratory zone. The applicant petitioned the governing body to amend the zone to permit this subject project, and on July 5th of this year, this zone was amended by the governing body to permit limited continuum of care communities as a conditional use in this zone. And you'll hear testimony stating that this application satisfies the use criteria in the amended ordinance. We will describe this use through testimony in a moment. Suffice it to say that the applicant seeks to build a three-story, 150-unit, limited continuum care senior living facility on the property. The building will be approximately 181,300 square feet. The project consists of 70 independent living units, 52 assisted living units, and 28 memory care units. The applicant also proposes various amenities such as courtyards, dog runs, infrastructure, lighting, and landscaping, and the applicant is proposing 123 parking spaces. You will hear testimony from the project engineer regarding cross easements and bank parking for the benefit of the adjoining property known as the Sonesta Hotel. Some context here, the Sonesta Hotel and the subject property were part of one parcel until they were subdivided back in 2015. There's the Declaration of Easement Maintenance Agreement going back to January of 2004 that was submitted as part of the application. Bottom line here is we need to provide 15 additional parking spaces for the hotel as a result of that application, and we're going to be proposing to do just that as part of this application. The applicant is seeking a design exception from the prohibition of parking along the perimeter of the building. We're also seeking bulk variance relief regarding front yard sec backs, location of the dog run, and steep slopes. We have received four reports. We have a review letter from Mr. Weiser of ARH, the board planner, dated September 14th of this year, review letter from Mr. Andrew Canziano of GPI, the board engineer, dated July 25th. We have a letter from the water department dated August 4th, and we have a Highlands consistency determination dated September 13 of 2022. This application was deemed to be consistent with the Highlands by the Highlands Council, which is why we're here tonight, otherwise we wouldn't be. We have six witnesses to present, and let me say at the outset, I referenced those reports. There were comments in those reports. There was questions that some of your board professionals wanted answered in testimony. So the witnesses have gone through great care to review those reports and are going to seek to address the comments from your professionals in their affirmative testimony, so I wanted to make you aware of that. Hopefully that makes the meeting a little more efficient. Our six witnesses are Steve Nichols, who's the Vice President of Senior Housing Division at Woodmont Properties, Mark Zafeli is the project engineer with PSNS, Tom Corman is the project landscape architect with Malillo Bauer &amp; Corman, Carl Penkey is the project traffic engineer with Langen Engineering, Mark Kabinski is the project architect with Meyer Design, and Jason Schooling is the project planner with PSS, PS and S. Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing further of me, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Stephen Nichols.
I think we'd like to do the waivers first.
Like to do the waivers first, okay. Would you like us to call the?
Going to turn it to our planner here, and he's going to walk us through it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Inglesino said, our report is dated September 14, 2022. There were a number of pages of submission items, but in terms of our completeness review, we can recommend that the application be deemed complete. There are a couple of items that we would wish to bring to your attention. Page five of our report indicates where requests for additional information start. Footnote seven, which is item 24 in the checklist, Form 5 checklist, we're going to ask the applicant's professionals to address and confirm that the proposed 10-by-16 trash enclosure is sufficient for the use. Moving over to the next page, we're asking the applicant's professionals to provide testimony regarding truck and tractor-trailer traffic emissions, noise, glare, vibration, heat, odor, et cetera, et cetera, and testimony regarding the need for a temporary contractor's construction structure. We are asking the applicant to, or the applicant's professionals, to provide a Google Earth or similar graphic in order to provide the board with a sense of context for this application. And that's really it. There are a couple of other waivers that we have listed in our report that we take no exception to. So we would recommend that such waivers as are listed be approved, subject to the items that I just spoke to regarding testimony. All right, do I have a motion approving the waivers as listed in the ARH associates' report of September 14, 2022? So moved, Von Aken.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Didich.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in time, I'd like to call Mr. Steve Nichols as our first witness. Mr. Santola is passing out a book, which I guess we could mark a one of this date.
Want to title that council? Do you want to title this?
This will be an exhibit book just describing the senior property.
Photo array, colorized photo array?
Yes.
Proposed?
Yes. All right, Mr. Nichols, I want you to raise your right hand.
You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please. Please spell your last.
Stephen Nichols, N-I-C-H-O-L-S, Vice President of Property of Senior Housing at Woodmont Properties, 100 Percival Avenue, Berkeley, New Jersey, 07004.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Nichols, you said you're the senior vice president of housing at Woodmont Properties with regard to senior housing. Can you describe basically what your duties are and just a little background about yourself in the industry of senior housing, the particular type of product that is being presented tonight?
Certainly, yes. I am the Vice President of Senior Housing at Woodmont Properties. Woodmont Properties has been a long-established multifamily developer here in the state of New Jersey, as well as New York and Pennsylvania, established since 1963. As you can see in the presentation that we handed out, we have some of the developments that Woodmont has developed throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as some of the senior housing developments that we are looking forward to developing in other towns in New Jersey. I have been in the senior living industry since the year 2000. I started with Sunrise Senior Living, worked with Atrius Senior Living, and then Brightview Senior Living. Many of those operators operate in the state of New Jersey. I was in operations for a good 12 years and then have been in development and operations for the remainder of my career. When I met the folks at Woodmont Properties, it seemed like a very natural fit and transition for myself to join the organization to head the senior housing project because they have been a long-established, very well-regarded developer of housing, and they self-perform. They build their own properties, and taking an operations platform and marrying it with this organization was a great fit, and we were very excited about what we're doing. So if we could just continue to skip through this?
Yeah, if you could just describe for the board what a limited continuing of care community is?
Absolutely. I would love to, and if you look on the next page, I could do that with illustrations. Limited continuing of care community is one that has independent living, assisted living, and memory care, all within the confines of either one or several buildings. In this particular case, you'll see that it is one particular building with two different building codes. We have a residential property, residential development and independent living, which would be residential construction, and then the commercial construction for the assisted living community and the memory care community, which would be separated by a firewall as designed right here, as you can see.
Okay, and these facilities are pretty regulated by the state of New Jersey?
That is correct. All of the assisted living and memory care community apartments, which will be known as beds, as per the Department of Health and the Senior Services, are regulated very rigorously, and they're inspected at least annually, oftentimes biannually.
I don't have any more questions for Mr. Nichols. Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to you for the board, if the board has any questions for him.
Does there any members of the board have questions of this, Mr. Von Aken?
Yeah, just quickly. So the memory care is the one that has the firewall in between? There's no separation between assisted living and/or independent?
Actually, the firewall is located in between assisted living, in between independent living, and assisted living and memory care. If you would look
Okay.
at the diagram on the right-hand side with the landscaping, it might be a little bit easier, you see where it says independent living courtyard?
Yes.
The firewall would actually run down maybe about a quarter of an inch to the right of that sign, where the memory care continuum in the rear would kind of meet up right there. Would you see that? So on the left side of that line would be the independent living community. On the right side of that line would be the regulated I-2 construction community.
Okay.
Firewall will be right there.
All right, thank you.
Quite welcome. This community, as Mr. Inglesino said, will have 150 apartments. With 150 apartments and proper staffing, that would be approximately 81 full-time equivalent jobs that are created. Reason I say full-time equivalent is in this type of environment, you want a nice mixture of full-time and part-time employees. So we're looking to create approximately 115 to 121 jobs here in the town of Precipiny Troy Hills. So it would be a very good job producer for the town. One of the questions that were brought up and was discussed prior to my coming up to the testimony here was deliveries. I just want to let you know that from an operations perspective, the deliveries that we will be receiving at this community in terms of large tractor-trailers will be very limited. Probably only be food truck deliveries three times a week, which will be scheduled during the daytime.
What kind of trucks bring in the food?
Uh, probably-
Are they box trucks?
Uh, box truck, correct. And those will be pretty regular, considering we have to feed our residents three times a day, seven days a week. We will have trash pickup, which will be located outside. We'll also have that dependent on resident activity. We anticipate that it'll be twice a week. We'll have compactors and trash in the building. Everything we've brought outside of the building will be picked up twice a week, once again on a scheduled basis.
Yeah, and the engineer will testify as to the enclosure.
Okay.
But from your experience, the enclosure is-
The enclosure is more than that.
More than that.
Correct.
Other questions by members of the board? Mr. Napolitano?
Yes, thank you. Of the ones in this picture, these eight, are any of these open yet, or are these all concept ones?
I'm sorry, what was-
Are any of these opened up yet?
The residential properties are opened up.
All eight of these are opened up?
The only ones that are not open are the ones that the senior housing development in Howell and the senior housing development in Metro Park, various stages of-
And these will be some of what you guys are building here?
Correct.
You mentioned deliveries. Do you have, how, does medication get delivered there?
Medication will be delivered there. There'll be two ways that medication will be delivered. Our independent living residents will have the right and autonomy to get their medication delivered by whomever they choose. I want to stress that for independent living residents, they have the autonomy to have everything, as if this was their apartment down the road. When it becomes an assisted living regulated delivery, that's delivered by our contracted pharmacy, and it'll be one to two times a day, and it'll be a delivery in a regular vehicle, probably in some cases not even a commercial vehicle.
Sure. Thank you. Members down here have any questions? You are an experienced member, officer of this team here. I see you've got 123 parking spaces, got 150 units?
That is correct.
All right, I want your comment. You're not the engineer, I get that. And I've just, I have experience with assisted living where the use, utilization of the parking spaces are very, very lumpy rather than continuous. You've got a whole bunch of employees. I want your comments on the record as to whether, why you think 123 spaces is adequate.
Thank you. At any given time, there will be approximately 40 to 42 employees at the community because we have a staggered shifts. We have a 7:00 to 3:00 shift, a 3:11 shift, and then overnight shift, 11:00 to 7:00. Those will predominantly be the main shifts for both the care staff and any of the support staff. So you'll have comings and goings. So 40 spots are usually reserved for staff. When it comes to the assisted living residents, those residents usually, well, by state law, have to have .5 parking spaces per. So because we have 80 licensed apartments, we're going to have 80 spots for our residents. I'm sorry, 40 spots for our residents, which is about 80 spots altogether. The remainder of the spots will be guests. So looking at these spots, we have more than enough adequate spots, and then when you factor in the independent living residents, typically an independent living resident, if we have 70 apartments, you're looking at about anywhere between 30 to 35 cars that will be there. Our community, while our residents will be independent, will also have vehicles and buses and shuttles that can take them to and from any location that they desire. So the necessity of having a vehicle in assisted living, independent living, is very small. And when I included the independent living ratio, when I mentioned the independent living, I'm sorry, the assisted living ratio, that was memory care inclusive. None of the memory care residents will have a vehicle. By law, we can't say they cannot, but historically speaking, and if anyone has any experience with someone with severe memory impairment that requires a type of living environment such as memory care, they don't have car keys.
Frankly, I'm not concerned about the residents in some of the places having it. I'm concerned about visitors.
Well, with the ratios I just described, is around 50 spots for visitors.
And Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant shares your concern. I think you're going to hear testimony from the engineer that we're overparked from what is required, specifically because the applicant-
There have been instances where we thought we were overparked and we weren't.
Right.
Okay, and I just want to find out, actually, if there are plans, if you do have a big event in one of the assisted living centers or something like that, where you have a lot of guests showing up, plus you have whatever residents who are living in the regular apartments, let's call them, filling their spaces, when, where do you put the cars when all of a sudden you've got, you know, an extra 30 or 40 visitors above and beyond because you have some sort of special event that occurs?
That's an excellent question, and I'll reference a holiday party.
Yes.
During our holiday parties, historically speaking, you would have all the family members try to attend from every aspect, every discipline of care, memory care,
Right.
assisted living and independent living. This particular location actually assists that process fairly well, considering it is in an office space. Now, while we have yet to be approved, I haven't spoken to any one of my neighbors, but should this be an operating community, I would speak to my neighboring locations, that being office park, and arrange parking for that. If for any reason whatsoever, I was not able to park in overflow for these very rare occasions, what I have done in the past as an operator is contract a parking facility to actually park my resident guest vehicles off-site and then valet it back and forth. While that's extremely rare, I will say that that has happened in the past, but these are contingencies that we make for communities such as this.
So is it fair to say, Mr. Nichols, that the, for the day-to-day, ordinary number of cars that would be at the facility, that you feel this is adequately parked, adequately parked? And again, we'll hear testimony that it exceeds the requirements.
I feel it's more than adequate.
And for extraordinary events, you'll make other arrangements?
Yes, I do, and yes, I will.
Okay, any other questions by members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
You want to open up to the public?
Well, indeed. The members of the public would like to ask questions of this witness at this time. Hearing and seeing none. Now, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Nichols. I represent boards too, so I can't help if, you know, it happens.
Thank you, you're fine. Got to get it on the record. New York reacts. Agreed.
Okay, our next witness here, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Mark Zafeli, who is the project engineer with PSNS.
Good evening.
Make sure that's on.
It's on.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please. Spell your last.
Mark Zafeli, C-I-Epperson-Frank-E-L-L-I. My business address is 1450 Highway 34 in Wall, New Jersey, 07753.
Thank you. Mr. Zafeli, if you can, just acquaint the board very briefly with your professional background, your education, and any licenses that you possess.
Sure, so I have a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I graduated in 2005. I've been practicing civil engineering the entire time since then, for 17 years. I've been licensed for over 11 years in the state of New Jersey. My license is active and in good standing. I'm employed by PSNS LLC as a Director of Project Management at our Wall Township location. I've appeared before this board and numerous planning and zoning boards throughout New Jersey.
And you've been accepted as an expert in the area of civil engineering, correct?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We respectfully request that Mr. Zafeli be accepted by the board as a professional in the area of civil engineering.
The members of the board satisfied with the engineers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Zafeli, if you'd be kind enough to describe the engineering aspects of this project? How many exhibits do you have there, Mr. Zafeli?
Two exhibits and some mounted plans that were submitted.
Why don't we, do you want to pre-mark the exhibits, just so that we don't interrupt the?
Yeah, were any of these submitted or previously?
Well, the colorized versions are not, you know, they're colorized, so they would be new, and I think you said he was going to mount some plans that were submitted, so we have to mark two. So can you describe A-2?
Sure, it's an existing aerial map of the property, based on a Bing aerial map from 2022.
Would you please take the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So we have an existing Bing aerial map from 2022. The title of the rendering is Existing Aerial Map. It's Sheet R-01. It also depicts the property boundary. Sorry, it's a little bit faint, and the surrounding area of the development.
And what's your other exhibit?
The other exhibit is a site plan rendering, which is a colorized version of the site plan on top of that same aerial image. This is at a smaller scale, so it's a larger image. You can see a little more detail, and it's Sheet R-02.
So the colorized site rendering will be Exhibit A-3.
This one's A-2.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Zafeli. Sorry to interrupt your flow there, but-
No problem. All right, let's start with a general overview of the site location. We are seeking tonight preliminary and final site plan and major soil moving permit with variance, sea variance. The property is located at 79 Interpace Parkway, which is Block 13601, Lot 1, per the Precipiny Tax Map. The property contains a total of 8.15 acres. It's currently owned by MCC7 LLC, with the applicant being Woodmont Senior Living LLC. As Mr. Inglesino said, the property is within the research office and laboratory zone, also known as the ROL, and the zoning was updated per ordinance 2022-19 to allow for limited continuum of care communities as a condition. General site orientation, so we have, to the north of the site-
Why don't you outline the sites of the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you really can't see the red.
It's the wooded area?
So the wooded area is the site. Again, it's 8.15 acres. To the north of the property, we have Interpace Parkway that runs along the whole frontage. Across the street is Ferring Properties. This is their first building. I think they also own this building now. And then further to the north, we have the project that was previously approved, the Morrison, which is under construction currently. To the east of the site, we have the Sonesta Suites Hotel. That was actually a parcel that was subdivided from this property and constructed sometime in the early 2000s. And to the west of the site, the property comes to a triangle, and it's really just bordered by Route 80 to the south, and then also Interpace kind of merges together with Route 80 over there. The lot's currently vacant and mostly wooded, with deciduous trees that are more mature on the west side of the property and newer growth on the east.
How would you access Interpace Parkway?
Interpace Parkway, the easiest way would be off Cherry Hill Road. You could turn in at the traffic light and head towards the- You could turn in at the traffic light and head towards the Sodesta site. Again, so we have newer growth trees on the right side of the property, the east side. Generally, low-quality trees, there's definitely invasive species within there, lots of heavy understory. On the property, we do have existing water and utility easements that run along the southern property line. There's a water and a sewer main within there. And then we have the parking easement, as previously discussed, which is for the fifteen spaces that would be dedicated to the hotel.
And those are over and above the one twenty-three, correct?
Yes, they will be. There is a chain link fence on the southern property line. It's a six-foot-high chain link fence. I know that was one of the comments in the review letter. That fence would remain, except for one section that I'll discuss that would be replaced. The property of the site generally slopes from north to south towards Route eighty. Actually, there's also this on-ramp from Cherry Hill onto Route eighty. The site drains in that direction into the circular area, which is the tributary of Troy Brook. There's approximately thirty-six feet of drop across the site, which is pretty significant. There's a good amount of steep slopes, over fifteen percent. We have about twelve point six of the property, percent of the property. There's no stormwater management currently existing on the property. Everything just flows, cheap flows across the site until it's collected in Troy Brook. In terms of environmental constraints on the property, there's no mapped wetlands on the property. We did have an LOI submitted to D E P that's under review. Langen Engineering performed that LOI, and they found no wetlands on the property or transition areas. So that would be reviewed and hopefully approved by D E P. In terms of flood hazard area, the site's mapped in the FEMA flood zone X, which is an unregulated area outside the five hundred-year floodplain. The nearest water, as I said, is Troy Brook, which runs approximately here. And all of Troy Brook is more than fifty feet from the southernmost property line. We anticipate Troy Brook having a fifty-foot riparian buffer due to the destructive nature of the area. So there's really no anticipated impact from flood hazard areas on the property. Real quick, I'm gonna discuss the demolition. As the site's unapproved, there's really no demolition, except for the clearing of trees. We have approximately three point five two acres of older growth tree removal on the west side of the site, and another two acres of newer growth tree removal, for a total of five point five five acres. We did submit a tree removal application to the forestry department of Parsipony, and that was approved for the removal of these trees for this development. The limited disturbance, you really can't see on here, is approximately six acres of the property out of the eight. Put the microphone? I may go right back. Okay. Now I'll discuss the proposed development. So I have the exhibit A three up now, which is the colorized version of the site plan. So it's proposed to construct a three-story, limited continuum repair building with one hundred and fifty units. This will have the mix of independent living, assisted living, and memory care. The project architect will get into more detail on the building itself, but I'll be discussing all its surroundings. The building, shown in orange-yellowish on the plan, fairly centrally located on the property, north to south, okay, more central, and it skews a little bit towards the west due to the shape of the lot being triangular on the west side. The building footprint is approximately eighty thousand five hundred square feet, which is about twenty-two point seven percent of the lot area. That's well under the maximum thirty percent building coverage for the zone. We also have about forty-five percent of the lot being impervious coverage, the pavement and part surfaces and roofs. That's well under the allowable impervious coverage of seventy percent for the zone. We have two access points into the site. There's one further to the west, and then a second entrance off of the Sodesta Suites driveway. For that location, we have two-way access. You can make a full turning movement into this entrance and an exiting. It is within a shared access easement area, so there's already an easement that allows for this connection of this driveway. And it maintains the alignment with the hotel's driveway for a nice ninety-degree intersection. There would be directional signage located in proximity to this entrance, just to the north of it, which would have information on deliveries, visitors, and so on. The second entrance is further to the west. Due to the popularity of the site, we had to really pull it further west. We really have this linear pavement area that leads to the entrance exit. This is a two-way incoming movement driveway, but it's limited to a right turn on the exit due to visibility, site triangle issues on Interface Parkway to the east. We have provided a four hundred and thirty-foot site triangle at this driveway, which is the ASNO standard for forty-five miles per hour. The posted speed limit here is forty, but we added five as the safety factor. And that actually gets pretty good visibility for a right turn out. See on the existing map, there's a bend in the road, so you can really get full visibility. We do have one variance that was called out in our A R H's review letter at this driveway location. Per the ordinance, there's a maximum driveway width of twenty-four feet. In the ordinance, it talks about excluding the curb radius in that measurement. So our driveways on-site are all twenty-four feet, but at the entrance itself, within the right of way, we're wider. We have a seventy-seven-foot curb cut, as we have thirty-five-foot radiuses at this entrance. This will allow for fire trucks and emergency vehicles to easily access the site. We also do have a multiple curb island in this entrance. That goal of that is really to direct the outgoing traffic to make a right turn only, so it gives a good visible warning that you're not supposed to be making a left. In addition, we have the, no left turn, signage located at this exit. The main monument signs on the site is located at this entrance. Double-sided sign outside of site triangles. It does meet all the sign regulations of the ordinance and would be uplift with landscaping surrounding it. The signs will only contain owners' names. It will not have any fluorescent or phosphorescent material and will not have more than five colors as it's regulated by the ordinance. In terms of building entrances, the main entrance is in the center of the building, on the north side of the building. We do have a drop-off lane in that area with a portco share. The portco share meets the setback and height requirement for the ordinance and allows for covered drop-off and pickup for visitors and residents. In the rear of the building, we have kind of a main staff entry point, which also serves as loading, back-of-house, utilities, and mechanicals. This, we do have a space there that the loading zone is about twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and thirty feet long, to earth. Per the ordinance, you need twice the length of a fire truck, which we use the Parsipony standard fire truck, which is fifty-seven feet long. So we do exceed twice that distance in our loading area. We have adequate turning space for larger trucks and fire trucks.
Could you highlight the loading area?
Oh, sure, okay. Thank you. So it's this paved area, kind of bumped into the building. There's no loading dock in this area, but it does have sidewalk entry to the rear of the building. Also in this, I'll get into the traffic. Other features of the site, we have three courtyard spaces for resident usage. There would be one for the memory care unit, which is fully enclosed here. There's the assisted living courtyard on the right side of the building, and then the independent living courtyard, which has the community space right opposite it. There are many of the ones we're providing on the site. We have a small dog run, it's about a thousand square feet, and that's located in the side yard of the building, which was also called out as a variance in A R H's letter. In the ordinance, it does talk about accessory uses in the side yard if the width of the lot is exceptionally larger than the requirement. So we have a front yard width minimum of three hundred feet is the requirement, and the existing frontage of the property is about twelve hundred feet. So it's quite a bit larger enough, so if that is considered exceptionally. But anyway, our dog run is within the side yard. It's closest to the independent living units, which would be the ones that would have fence. And it's fully fenced. There would be no impact to neighbors on that side of the property, as we're bordered by Route eighty and Interface on that side. So really no noise concerns. Visibility, there'd be a pretty significant tree buffer to Route eighty, and also some existing buffering that would be remaining on Interface. But visibility noise, not an issue with the small dog run. Some other site features, all the curbing on the site will be Belgium block. We have concrete sidewalks, and those will have a minimum width of six feet. Most of the sidewalks do front on perpendicular parking spaces, so the six feet allows for a two-foot bumper overhang, which is in accordance with RSIS. We have a total of a hundred and twenty-three parking spaces on the property. That's not including the fifteen spaces that we're providing within the easement area. Spaces are all nine by eighteen, which is the RSIS standard. We have six ADA spaces as well, which exceeds the minimum number of ADA spaces. And those do have five-foot-wide access aisles for the standard spaces and eight-foot-wide for the van accessible spaces, which we have two of. So that does also exceed the ADA van accessible parking requirement. The total parking requirement on the site, there's no direct equivalent category in RSIS. Assisted living has a half a space per unit requirement, and the ordinance has a point six space per unit requirement for assisted living. So taking the higher of those, the point six, would be ninety, ninety spaces required. But as Mr. Nichols testified, it's not really accurate. We do have more parking, and we feel that there is a justified need for that additional parking. If you look at the ratio of independent living, visitors, and staff, a hundred and twenty-three is not as overparked as it would appear by the RSIS ordinance calculation. The fifteen spaces, which would be dedicated to the hotel, is this western, the southwestern row that borders the hotel. Per the review, engineering review letter, it was recommended to add a sidewalk connection and a crosswalk to the hotel, which we would definitely do as a condition of approval, if we are approved. So that parking easement was created in two thousand and four with the subdivision of the property. It also had cross-access easements within that easement declaration. The applicant would like to build those parking spaces now, rather than banking them, as we show, just to make sense with the construction, the disturbance on the property, not have to come back and do further disturbance. We also have stormwater management areas underneath that pavement. So it just, it makes things logistically easier to build it now, rather than just leaving it as grass. Also in that area of the site, towards the entrance, we do have a proposed electric transformer pad, which could house up to two transformers. We're finding on a lot of these sites with the EV parking requirements now that they're getting into few transformers with heavier loading. So we did provide the space with that. It had bollards surrounding it for protection from traffic, and it would also have landscaping around it, visually. There's also some retaining walls on the property due to the slopes of the site. We have a single-tiered wall that runs from this corner of the building and around the certain eastern parking. That wall would also have a guide rail on top to protect it, because there is a drop-off. I think it's a maximum of about six feet at one point. And then we have a larger three-tier wall at the front of the property. And each tier of that wall is a maximum of four feet, in accordance with the ordinance, and it has a three-foot climbing strip between each tier as required. Do you wanna talk a little bit more about the EV spaces? As we all know, there's the EV law that requires fifteen percent of the required parking on the site to be EV charger. So we are providing, or would be required to provide sixteen EV spaces on the property. We are providing that, and it would be broken out into three phases. So with the initial construction, we would be required to build six EV spaces. They would all have the class-two chargers as required, and one of those spaces would also be ADA accessible, as five percent of the total spaces are required to be. The second six spaces would all be pre-wired, and that would be for installation within three years of the certificate of occupancy. And then the final spaces, which would be four spaces remaining in the last third, would be required to be installed within six years. We spaced out the electric chargers. We have a bank of five on this west side. We have the one ADA accessible space nearest to the entrance. We have another six spaces on the east against the hotel. And then we have four more spaces at the rear, which would be more of like an employee parking area, most likely. We chose to put them on the opposite side of the parking, so that we wouldn't interfere with the sidewalks. So the chargers do take up space, and with a six-foot sidewalk prevents, or presents some issues with potential ADA access behind them. And then also, you can't put it behind the sidewalk, because you would have the charging cable across the sidewalk, preventing sidewalk access. So putting them further on the aisles that don't have sidewalks is easier. It's still convenient to the building entrances. And it's located in all the, in three, four, four different areas of the site, to give options of where you park. There is a recommendation in the engineer's letter to provide bollards to protect these chargers. The applicant does not wish to have bollards at the chargers. They will be located between the parking stalls, so a little bit less risk of impact. They're double charge, double-port chargers. And they would also have curb stops, or wheel stops at these spaces, which prevents the car from pulling too far forward. There was also a recommendation to remove all the wheel stops from the remainder of the site, which we would agree to join. So we currently have wheel stops in all those spaces that fronted on sidewalks. With the six-foot sidewalk, we do have enough space to not need those wheel stops, so we're gonna, we will take those out. But I think there's a few spaces that would remain, which would be the ADA spaces, as they have a flush curb in front of them, it's just another measure of safety. And then also the EV chargers, it makes sense to have a little bit extra protection. There was also a waiver, design waiver listed in A R H's letter for having parking completely around the building perimeter. We do have parking around most of the perimeter. We do have one section in the rear where it would not fit on the property. So we do have parking around most of the perimeter. I'm not sure how the board wants to interpret that item in the ordinance. But we like, with the parking spread around the perimeter, it gives proximity to all the entrances, and also not crossing too many lanes of parking to get into your destination. It's also optimal for site lighting, is you can throw the light across the parking stalls. A R H also recommended having a sidewalk connection around the entire building. The only spot we don't have sidewalk now is from the rear loading area around the back to the eastern parking area. We do have a retaining wall there, so we require steps. And there's also some pretty steep slopes in the rear, as well as our stormwater management outfalls. But it wasn't really the safest area to put a sidewalk, it's pretty isolated and... It's pretty isolated and we didn't feel it was necessary for concrete. There's definitely a good amount of sidewalk to get some exercise on. You can walk around, step through the courtyards and look back without needing to go fully around the building. We do also have a grass paper access driveway in the rear that provides maintenance and maintenance access to the stormwater outfall, which is in this rear area. In terms of existing vegetation remaining, we're keeping a good amount on the western side. We have a buffer strip along the entire frontage that would all be existing trees remaining in that area. It is more than the required 25-foot buffer distance. I think they're about 40 feet average in there. And then our site is also quite a bit lower than Interface Parkway, so it's kind of higher for the building slightly. I mentioned the existing chain link fencing around the southern property line. There is one section that we would be replacing with a privacy fence, a six-foot high privacy fence. That's where we're in closer proximity to Route 80. Our driveway does get within 12 feet of the property line in this area. So we're providing this fence as a visual buffer as well as landscaping, as you'll see the landscape architect will present. There was a variance called out in the ARH letter for this. The ordinance has a requirement for parking spaces to be more than 30 feet from street right-of-way lines. While all of our parking is more than 30 feet, we have about 31 at this space and 31 at this space here. The driveway does come within 30 feet. So if a variance is required for that, then it would only be for that section of driveway, which is being visually buffered from Route 80. We did run a site circulation calculation on the property where we have fire trucks, garbage trucks, SU30s, which is like a typical FedEx UPS delivery truck. Did not run tractor trailers as it wouldn't be anticipated on the property. We had no issues with circulating the site. There was adequate turning space in the rear loading zone for even the fire truck. And having two points of entry makes it also easier to navigate through the site. I do need to talk about trash collection. So we have a 10 by 16 trash enclosure in the rear. That would be sized to handle two dumpsters that could have trash and recycling. That one would be anticipated to hold more of the food waste that needs to stay outside to pick up. We also have a reinforced concrete pad in this general area, which would be used for additional pickup space for trash coming out of the compact room in the building. So that would only be on pickup day where dumpsters can be rolled out for additional pickup. And management would coordinate the private trash pickup and recycling. And the hauling schedules will be based on demands of the development. I think Mr. Nichols said it would be anticipated to be twice a week. We have a emergency generator also in this rear area. The benefit of having everything in the rear, it's pretty well isolated, no visibility from Interface. And then also with the buffer to Route 80, it would be not much of a visual impact.
What does that generator run on?
I don't think it's been determined yet. Likely diesel though.
Diesel?
That would have any required sound enclosures to keep the noise in accordance with the regulations. Now I'm going to get a little bit into drainage and drainers, some more fun stuff. We are maintaining existing drainage patterns on the property, so everything draining from north to south. We have accessible ADA routes on all the sidewalks to each building entrance and amenity space. We have several retaining walls due to the slopes. And we've tried to keep road grades at a maximum of 4%. And all the ADA spaces are 2% maximum in any direction as required. We do have excess steep slope disturbance on the property, which is a variance. For 15% slopes, the allowable percent disturbance is 35%. We're disturbing 57.6% of those slopes. For 20% slopes, there's 25% allowable disturbance and we're at 47.4%. And for slopes greater than 25%, you can disturb 15%, but we're proposing 23.6. This was mostly due to the concentration of steep slopes along the interface frontage. So in order to get our second entrance and to grade the property to have positive drainage away from the building, we're required to disturb some of these deep slopes. They would all be stabilized during construction and after construction with vegetation. And we're also providing those retaining walls. So essentially we're almost flattening some of the slopes through construction, which will have a positive impact on the drainage through the site. We're also collecting drainage downstream of these deep slopes. So rather than it flowing entirely through the property as it does today, it would be collected and detained in order to meet the stormwater regulations. Part of this application, we did submit an application for soil moving permit, as there would be an earthwork requirement on this property. We've calculated to be about 10,000 cubic yards of material that would need to be cut from the site. Due to the slopes, we had to raise the building in some areas and we had to cut in others. The 10,000 yards became a balance. A major soil moving permit is required as it's more than 100 cubic yards. This will include the removal of topsoil, fill and buried topsoil. Soil investigations performed on the site showed some fill and buried topsoil in areas. So it's anticipated that would be removed with the cut if it can't be used in other areas. There was also some miscellaneous debris downs such as brick, clay, pipe and wire. And any of these items would be removed from the area of the building for structural reasons. The process would be to strip the topsoil first and stockpile it on site for possible reuse in the landscaped areas. Whatever can't be reused would be taken off-site. The operating hours would be from 7:00 to 5:00, or 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday. That's when they would expect the soil removals to take place. The majority of the excess soil is on the west side of the site, so we're cutting into the slope a little bit more. The site has easy access to Route 80, 46 and 287 for truck routes to remove the soil. No traffic control is anticipated during the earthwork operations. There is a signalized intersection at Cherry Hill Road, which makes it easier to exit the development. Construction, soil erosion, sediment control devices would all be in place prior to any earthwork, which would include dust control, stabilized construction entrances, fill fence, inlet and tree protection for the remaining trees. As the site is an mostly commercial area, there'd be minimal impact on the residential properties in the area in terms of noise and traffic during the earthwork operation. And there's no proposed impact to flood hazard, wetland or conservation areas. Stormwater management, the site is a major development. We're disturbing over an acre and we're increasing motor vehicle surfaces on the property by more than a quarter acre. So we need to provide water quantity, quality, recharge, low-impact development, while providing green infrastructure in accordance with the DDP regulations. For water quality, all motor vehicle surfaces will be treated through the use of porous pavement. So we have porous asphalt surfacing on the majority of our asphalt. Below that, there would be stone storage in some areas or expanded volume with what's called an art tank storage system. It gets a higher volume below the surface instead of the stone, stone fill, which has less void space. In terms of quantity, we're meeting the required reductions. So we're reducing the two-year storm by more than 50%, the 10-year storm by more than 25% and the 100-year storm by more than 20%. And that's through the use of that porous paving with stone storage and art tanks below. Groundwater recharge is being met by infiltrating the entire water quality storm event. Based on the ordinance, there's an enhanced recharge requirement for this property that was, I guess, driven by the Highlands regulations. And one way of meeting the recharge on that is to infiltrate the entire water quality storm, which is what we anticipate doing. We are using green infrastructure. The porous paving is an approved green infrastructure management device in accordance with the EP. And we're also providing a maintenance and operations manual to properly take care of the stormwater management on site. In terms of low-impact development, we had minimized the amount of disturbance on the property. Not too much grading outside of any of the roadway areas we're building and the use of the tanning wall is occasioned that as well. We're maintaining existing drainage patterns and then meeting all the other DDP requirements. One thing we did account for in our stormwater design here was higher rainfall data. The DEP has been in talks about increasing the rainfall data to account for future design flood events going out as far as the year 2100. This is a pretty good increase over the current requirement of the DEP. We're not sure of when that's going to go into effect, but I know there's an information session this week on it, so it could be fairly soon. So we did want to account for that in our design, so we didn't need to go that route. It does also provide a more conservative approach. So we'd have additional storage volume on-site, which is a benefit to the downstream properties. In terms of the other engineering comments on stormwater management, we would agree to comply with the comments I haven't discussed, which is just about all of them. The higher rainfall data is the one that we would like to stay where we're at at this time. There was also a comment about underground basin four, which is in the east parking lot, being in close proximity to the retaining wall. We have about 10 feet from the retaining wall in that area, which is a maximum of six feet high. Typically, a six-foot wall would have four or five feet of geo grid behind it, meaning that we're another five feet behind that with our basin. The depth of our basin is also lower than the retaining wall, so we don't see a major detriment of having it in that proximity. And there would also be a tow drain on the retaining wall to remove drainage or to remove water from behind the wall. I think the last comment I want to address in the engineering stormwater section is the snow removal from the site. So we do have some decent green areas surrounding the pavement that you could definitely push snow or shovel it onto. With the porous paving, you can use rubber plated files, you can use snow blowers, and you can also use salt on it to melt the snow. There's actually been proven benefits of using porous paving in colder climates. I know they do a lot of it in Canada, Minnesota, even. They find that the fact they use the melting agents prevents the possibility of refreeze. So things like black ice that you would experience now on typical pavement are much less likely to occur on the porous paving, which is a nice benefit, especially in the senior community. It also prevents the expansion and contraction of the soil below because you have that stone storage bed. The pavement will be less subject to heaving and premature failure. In terms of utilities on the property, we're proposing a water main that would connect. There's an existing water main that runs through the easement to the west of our driveway. And then there's another main that runs from Interface and then behind the site. So our proposed water main runs through the main entrance road and would create a loop water system through the property. We are proposing four new hydrants on this main. So we'd have less than 400 feet between any point of the building and a hydrant, which meets RSIS requirement. Backflow prevention, that would occur within the building. We'd have a water room. And we did receive a review letter from the water department and will comply with their comments. Sewer, we have a single sewer lateral coming out of the rear of the building. And that ties directly to the existing sewer main that runs along the southern property line. So that's actually very convenient and completely within the property. So no need to disturb Interface Parkway. And also being a lower elevation at the bottom makes it very suitable for gravity flow, no pumps or more expensive ways of getting this unflow. Electric, telecom and gas, there's an existing utility pole at the front entrance to the hotel. We would anticipate dropping from that pole to underground electric and telecom. That would run from the pole to the transformer with the primary service. And then the secondary service runs into the core of the building. Gas service is also an interface and that would also run parallel with the telecom and electric into the core of the building. We are providing adequate soil erosion control measures on the property. We will make an application to Morris County soils and anticipate that meeting their requirements with the silt banks and the protection entrances, stockpiles, concrete washout and other features that we're providing. We do have a construction staging area on the property, which is in this western parking lot. That would allow for portable toilets and a contractor trailer during construction.
Could you discuss a little bit of the need for that?
Sure. So during construction, we want to have materials and materials coming in and also stockpile the material on-site. So we're trying to keep that all on the western side of the site, which is the newer growth tree area. It's pretty more wide open over there, so it'd be a little bit easier to use that area at the beginning of construction. It's also got easy access to existing entrance for pretty normal vehicles that come into the site besides the heavier equipment. I think the last thing I need to discuss is site lighting. We have a mixture of fixtures throughout the site. We have pole-mounted lights in the parking lot areas with a maximum height of 16 feet. Those are all LED fixtures with downward pointing lights, so it prevents a lot of the spill over and glare with these properties. We have some bollard lighting in the courtyard areas to provide an amount of lighting on the sidewalks there. And then there's a few building mounts in areas where we needed additional lighting. The highest mounted light is 15 feet, like I said. And there's a mixture of type three, four and five optics, which we can really maximize the light coverage in all the parking and sidewalk areas and minimize the amount of hotspots. We have an average foot handle of 1.4 and a maximum of 3.8, which is a very good ratio. There's not a big difference between the highs and the lows, which is ideal for visibility. We do have a minimum of .1 foot handles, but that's in the courtyard areas. The more, not probably, the sidewalk areas surrounding the parking lot are at higher levels. The minimum there is .4, which meets IES standards. We did include a light loss factor in our calculations as well, so it's not a, it counts for some light loss over time with the fixtures. All lighting is timer, photocell and motion sensor compatible. So the owner will have a lot of options on how they control the lighting. If they find it too bright at times, they can dim it at certain hours. It could also be on motion sensor in areas where they don't need light at all hours. But otherwise, I think the standard light would be dust upon on the property through the use of photocells. Our planner will discuss the variances, which I mentioned already. And then we do have permits that are either...
And you had mentioned those as well.
Yes, we have the soil removal, which is part of this. We did get the Highlands consistency determination and the Parsippany tree removal permit already were received. were received. The Morris County Soil Conservation Permit is under review. And then after an approval, so if you grant one, you would go for the TWA and water extension modifications. And then the LOI is also in progress.
I think it's a presence absence, but...
Presence absence, yes.
So the only thing I would comment, if I can, before turning it over to questions is, with regard to the water department letter, we just have to work out a discrepancy with them in terms of the existing permitting. We think our permitting for water extends until April of next year, so we'll work that out with them. I know that's not a board jurisdiction matter anyway, but we'll work that out with them. Any requirements that they have?
Usually, as part of the resolution of approval, we're asking you to work with all of our town professionals of one sort or another, and you always agree.
Yes, we will agree. I just wanted to point out that it was a little bit of a discrepancy that was to clear up with them in terms of when the existing permitting expires and so on, but we'll work that out with them.
Okay.
We haven't received any reviews from the fire official or sewer department, but we have, or police, that they're going to comment.
I'm surprised you haven't.
Okay, so that concludes all of my questioning of Mr. Sefeli, Mr. Chairman. So we turn it back to you for any questions and...
One waiver with the noise and liquid discharges, industrial waste. I should address that, I guess.
Go ahead, why don't you address that?
So there's no liquid waste discharges into the stormwater system here. All roof runoff will tie into stormwater, but anything else will tie into sanitary. There's no industrial waste anticipated from this use. In terms of noise and vibration, we'd only anticipate that during construction, and that would be between the hours of seven and five. After construction, it's residential-type use, and that wouldn't be an issue. There's no heat-producing processes on the site, and we've minimized glare from our lighting with the downward-facing fixtures. Parking spaces facing the hotel would be buffered with vegetation to prevent the headlight glare there. And there's no industrial uses on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Turn it back to you for any questions of this witness.
I'm actually going to ask the board if they'd like to take a quick five-minute break before we go into questioning at this point. So we're going to go on a five-minute break. We're going to pause. Is the right word? It's not a...
Recession.
Recession, okay. For five minutes. See you back here in a few moments. A little recess. The meeting of the Planning Board of Precipice Troy Hills. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bavaria.
Here.
Mr. Dedich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
That's here.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Denzmore.
Here.
All right. Before we go to questions from the board, I'm going to ask for comments and questions from our engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Yes.
You're up.
All right, so just going through, thank you for the testimony, just in no particular order, but generally in the order of our review letter. Could you just clarify the EV charging station? Six spaces need to be identified and constructed during the first phase of construction. Where were they going to be? You identified all 16 spaces. Which location is going to be the initial?
We'd have the 188 space up front, and then there's a bank of five spaces by the dog run. I think that would make sense to build those first.
Okay, so those are going to be the initial.
That would be our first six.
Okay, and you'll update the plan accordingly?
Yes. And then the make-ready ones would be...
The remaining?
I think this would be the next phase, and the rear would be the last.
Okay.
There's four in the rear.
All right. The banked parking spaces, thank you for the testimony, because that wasn't clear what was going on with that. So those will be constructed as part of this project?
Yes, the applicant wishes to build them with initial construction for three. Those would be for the hotel, not for...
Those are for the hotel per the easement agreement. Now, what would stop or is there any agreement that you guys are considering for use of those spaces in light of the chairman's questions on peak period and available spaces? There seems to be 15 spots there that could be used. Any thought given to that?
Yeah, so if I can just address that, that's a legal question, which may involve having the hotel go back to get amended approval from its original approval from back in 2003 because they were required to do 15, up to 15 bank spaces offsite. So in order to reduce that number of 15, they'd have to go back and get that approval amended. So, you know, that's an open question.
It's similar to what you had testified of before about utilizing, making arrangements at offsite properties for parking. I don't see how that's different.
Well, we could certainly make arrangements for parking on a part-time basis or for an event or something like that, but I think we just have to be careful of not running afoul of the approval granted back in 2003.
I would then recommend, if you go to build them now, which I think is a good idea, signage to that effect that those are not to be used unless there is some kind of...
Yes.
Regarding the path or sidewalk to make a complete loop, and I understand this is an assisted facility, but I believe there would be some people looking for some exercise. I defer to the board. I do think grade-wise, you could get a path around to complete a loop around the whole building on the rear of the building. I defer to the board if they, if it is doable grading-wise to make a reasonable path connecting the easterly side to the center rear of the building to make a complete loop so that pedestrians could, you know, a person could walk around the whole building if they decided to.
Full lap.
Yeah, full lap. Grade-wise appears to be doable.
Yeah, and Mr. Canjiano, we would agree to do that upon further consultation with you so that we could just, you know, both get comfortable with that it's safe.
So you're going to agree to work with the township professional?
And defer to their reasonable judgment in terms of whether or not they want us to do that.
And make a reasonable attempt to make a full circuit, which I also very much agree with our engineer.
Correct.
It's a really good idea.
Yep.
It would require stairs on one side to work ADA compliant with...
Has to be...
Around. Would it require fencing also? You said that was a steep grade on that side.
It's less than three to one.
And you have to go down about six feet in total, right?
Yeah.
It appeared to be off your topography.
Yeah.
It's about a six-foot grade drop, let's say, and over about 100 feet lift. So it's not a particularly steep slope. Maybe a step or two would be, would make sense. I think that would be a nice amenity, yes. It may not be ADA compliant, but this is for people who want to get some exercise and want to walk.
We'll agree to work with you on that and with the idea towards achieving the goal of a complete loop.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I believe the operator, the gentleman from Woodmont, testified that there would be some tractor trailers, and you testified that there wouldn't be any. And more importantly, does the arrangement allow for a tractor trailer, should one come in, to be able to navigate the site and, you know, get the deliveries into the site and not have to do something, you know, back up half a way around the site is my concern?
Yeah, I think Mr. Canjiano, Mr. Nichols testified a little. He can come back up if he's still under oath. Just want to clarify his testimony. I thought his testimony was that he didn't envision any tractor trailers, and I thought that Mr. Sefeli's testimony may have been along the same lines, but let's clarify.
I may have got that wrong.
Go ahead.
There will not, it should be box trucks that will come in.
Box trucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not going to have tractor trailers?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that clarifies that. And then speaking of the box trucks, I'm glad you're here, or Amazon trucks rather, with all the Amazon deliveries and that and such, different parcel deliveries. What was the, and I realize you have loading in the rear and you have a Portico share in the front, two places they can, what is the operational, where would they, would you be receiving like Amazon-type trucks, FedEx-type vehicles?
All those deliveries would be in the front. There's a concierge located at the front, as well as a package station for the residents. Anything that would be for the community would be immediately delivered to the location of the community because we have several different disciplines, such as activities department, food service department, nursing department. We can't leave those things just lying around. We'll have staff that will actually deliver that right to the department.
Okay. And this may be more for the engineer or architect. I believe, if I recall, the Portico share was of sufficient height over 13 feet to allow for a truck as not to have an issue navigating that drop-off area. What is the height of the Portico share?
The architect can cover the clearance height. It's 24 feet is the, is that the max?
I was thinking about vertical clearance height.
Yeah, the architect will testify on that question.
All right. But it is the intent for them to utilize the pull-off Portico share area to drop off parcels? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Soil, soil movement, for the soil movement permit, just to clarify, it was about 10,000 cubic yards, which is about how many trucks would you estimate?
Usually like 20 yards of trucks.
So maybe 500 yards, 500 trucks or so. What duration, how long of a period would that roughly would it take, construction be for that soil movement? Do you have that handy? If you don't, maybe you can come back to it if you can get that in the record.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the exact story, so I would think it'd be...
You got to do all that earthwork in a month?
Yeah. We could...
Okay, just wanted to get it on the record.
Get you that answer, even if it's a condition of, or even if it's post-approval. It's more of a construction question, really not for the board, but we'll provide the answer.
All right. And stormwater management, it's a very elaborate system as they require it to be. You have a very elaborate system. We had many, many comments. Are you agreeing to address our comments or give, you know, work with us?
We'll work with them, for sure.
On those comments? In particular, the one, the couple that jumped out was as the state stormwater management standards require and the township standards, soil testing at each BMP.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the groundwater manly analysis as well? And going back to the basin that's close to the retaining wall, we will have to look at that closer, maybe some stability calculations, cross-section, et cetera, just to satisfy that because that will be hydrostatically loaded from those basins, so that has to be looked at a little bit closer.
Okay.
Let's see. Generally covers my comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, planner would have a question or two?
Yes, thank you. Several questions, but they're all very small. Height of the generator?
It would be less than 15 feet as required.
Less than 15.
That would include any enclosure if necessary.
You went through the fencing, and there's a lot of fencing going on of different types, and I think I got lost a little bit during the conversation. So you've got the chain link fence. What's the height of the chain link fence?
That is, the existing is six feet, which meets the rear yard requirement.
And no chain link is proposed?
No.
Okay.
Only be repairs if necessary.
Sure.
No, no new.
You've got the stockade, cedar stockade privacy fence. That's new?
Yes, that's for that section of driveway that is within less than 30 feet.
And the height of that is?
Also six feet.
Six feet? And then you've got a cedar stockade fence at 3 feet 6 inches?
That is for around the dog run.
On the dog, okay. Thank you. Just to confirm that for all of the fences that are going to be installed, they're going to be no less than 6 inches from the property line?
Correct, the proposed section. There is one section of existing fence that's over the property line currently. I think they would like to leave that in place. It's not impacting anything at this point.
Okay. And the finish side is going to be facing outward?
Outward.
And then you already addressed the, there is one issue that the bottom of page nine and top of page 10 of our report, there seems to be some conflicting requirements in terms of the parking location. We have one section that says it is permitted front side and rear yards. We have a second that says not between the front building line and the street right-of-way in any industrial district. Arguably, the ROL may be construed as an industrial district, so I don't know whether at this point that would be a variance or a design waiver, but I did want to make sure that that was covered in whatever approvals are granted.
Okay. And we do have, not on the matters, but the hotel does have parking in their front yard. I don't know if that was a variance for them or not.
I wasn't here for that, so I don't know. So, I mean, I will leave it up to the attorneys as to whether that's a design waiver or variance, but it is, it's an inconsistency in the ordinance, so it ought to be addressed at some level.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this?
We'll, during our planner's testimony, he'll just touch upon that and...
That's fine.
...annunciate some of the benefits of that as it furthers the project.
I don't object to it, but I just want to...
No, I understand.
Perhaps the planner can also give some testimony if it is not a variance and if it's a design waiver, so we know the burden of proof as to how it's going to be presented.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this time, I'm going to entertain questions from the board. Mr. Mealy.
At this time, it appears that the perimeter of the building is adequately accessible for fire equipment, except the corner that Mr. Canjiano referred to regarding an extension of a sidewalk. I understand we haven't received a report from the fire department concerned with that area. Could you consider or at least go over what that driveway, what that driveway shows there on the southeast corner? What is that? Maintenance for maintenance only or...
Grass paper access road. That would be for access and maintenance of the stormwater management outfall.
Might the fire department want to request access to that corner of the building?
Well, it, I mean, it's hard to envision what the fire department may or may not request, but let me ask the witness, the building is sprinklers?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's no code requirement, I don't know whether this is for you or for the architect. I'm asking a question because I know the answer from other applications, but there's no requirement that there be full circulation around the building by an emergency vehicle, right? And the ordinance doesn't require that either, does it? You know, so I guess, you know, that would be the end. The building is sprinklers? And so, you know, I guess our view is, is that the building is certainly code requirement.
I believe Mr. Canjiano referred to a slope. Is there a slope in that area going down from the building towards Route 80?
There is, yes.
And that would be prohibitive in terms of building a driveway for...
Yes, and the, and the great differential between the end of the loading area and the west, and the eastern parking lot is also challenging if we had that retaining wall.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dedich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. So the 15 parking spots for the hotel, I just want to be sure, those are over and about the 123? They are not part of the 123?
Correct, it's not counted in there.
Okay, thank you. So the other question I have is about the ADA parking. In a regular, normal situation, the percentage-wise, I think we are covered, but the kind of residents here, who are going to be here, assisted living in other categories, I would imagine there will be more need than the 5% or what the requirement is. So any thoughts on that?
Is that the possibility of adding additional ADA spaces out in the front? It's all relatively flat there. It'd be kind of difficult to guess at this, at this point, how many we actually needed.
Right, yeah, and I understand. There's no point painting 40 of them though, right? So that won't help either, right? Yeah, so I have a suggestion on that and if you could consider that. And again, I have a medical condition and that's why I kind of have a little bit of connection with that. So most of the time, getting that one step on the sidewalk, that becomes very difficult for, or if you have a, you know, wheelchair or something of that kind or a scooter or that kind of thing, you have to actually come to the entrance to actually get over the, that sloopy ramp and that type of stuff. If you could add more of those in a couple of places, that will help. Even if somebody's parking a little further, they could use that to get quickly on the, otherwise they would walk on the, on the parking area and on the road as well. That could be, not be safe.
I think that's a good idea as well. It'd be easy, we'd still maintain positive drainage away from the building.
Exactly, yeah. That would be.
We can.
We just wouldn't be, we wouldn't put signs for handicaps.
No, 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 we can, we can add some of the flush parking, some additional flush parking to the reasonable satisfaction of the board engineer as a condition of approval.
Yeah, and then just those slopes would be just helpful. And again, I will leave it to your judgment on that, you know, where do you add or how do you add that? And one more last question. We talked about medical equipment or the stuff coming in, they will, or the medical waste will be properly managed. Is that?
It's an operations question, but, but yes, as Mr. Nichols testified too, this is a pretty heavily regulated use by the state and I'm sure there will be a general condition in the resolution that we have to comply with all state rules and regulations. And this is a regulated, heavily regulated industry, so yes.
Just want to get it done on the record here.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Mary, down at this end, you have a question, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you. Back to the parking spaces, are they going to be assigned or is that an operations question? Operations, okay. Are you going to use your own emergency vehicles or is you going to use precipitate volunteer EMT? For you again, there, first one. That one's kind of important to me, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have, again, this is Mr. Nichols.
I apologize, I should have asked.
And Mr. Nichols, you understand you're still on the road, correct?
I did.
Yeah, so I know that Mr. Dedeche just talked about the handicap spaces and then are they going to be assigned spots? They, the residents want to worry about that?
There will not be assigned spots.
Okay, so it's not like you're an apartment, one, this is your spot. That's how it works.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the second one was, are you going to use precipitate volunteer EMTs?
Yes, we are going to use precipitate.
Okay, do any of your other properties, do you have your own?
We will not have.
On staff, okay.
I will, I would like to add that part of the technology that we are incorporating into our senior living platform is to, is going to try to limit the amount of emergency contact that we, emergency services that we require. There are several different devices that are on market right now that can be instituted in senior living communities that others view as expensive, that we view as vital to work with the town. So we're going to try to limit our emergency services.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you. I think I'm going to go back there. I know it's appropriate, I apologize for that.
And Mr. Nichols stays in front.
Yeah, he's still on the road. Is there going to be enough trees to block the sound from Route 80? I know that's going to be a concern for all of us up here. I figured I'd just get out of the way. I know I walk the dog and I live about a mile away by the high school and I hear those trucks. I can't imagine how loud it's going to be on this side of the building and this corner against Route 80 there. You know, what's, are you going to build a bigger buffer of trees? I mean.
There's not really much room there. Those units on that bottom wing though are higher, they're raised up due to the slope of the site. That should help some of it, I imagine.
We were talking a more, more about the, the open area where they, that's, they can go outside.
The echo chamber?
Yeah, that's going to be like a real echo chamber. I was wondering if you're going to be planting evergreens between that open area and Route 80 to buffer some of that truck traffic.
I think our landscape architect will read.
Yeah, I thought I would say that for him too.
Okay. I know, I'm a wrong person here. Well, you had, you said, you mentioned snowmobile and you mentioned having snow blowers. Is that all going to be outside landscaper or is that going to be on site? Operations both, okay. So the individual snow blowers will be on site and the bigger machines, okay. All right. I think that might be it for me. I just, wrong people, sorry. Actually, I have a question, I'm sorry, Inglisino too. Did you just mention there was an environmentalist that'll be testifying also?
An environmentalist, no.
No ecologist, no environment, okay.
No.
And then, did you mention?
But I do leave it to Mark so I can testify as to living next to Route 80.
Okay, it's loud. And then, did you mention any of these apartments will fit the affordable housing quota? Was that mentioned before? I can't remember.
So there's a, there's a mandatory 10%.
10%, right.
Set aside for Medicaid, per regulation.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Aken, did you have any questions?
I only had one. You know, you did a very thorough job of checking off all the questions I had as we went. There was only one that was left and it's very small, but you mentioned that there's only a right turn out of that western entrance. What was the reason for that?
There's a, there's a high point of the road right past Baring's driveway.
Okay.
There's not enough distance to.
All right. But out of the other entrance, you will be able to make a left hand turn?
Yes.
Okay.
That's an existing two way exit.
Is that the section, pinder section that they were talking about signalizing?
I don't, I don't remember.
Can't imagine there'd be enough hours for that.
It's something I remembered hearing about that at some point, but.
Those are both driveways, that's the hotel and then the.
Yeah, unfortunately, your testimony was thorough enough that I had no other questions.
Okay. Mr. DePiero, did you have any?
No, I'll wait for them. Evergreen expert.
All right. I appreciate that you may have some curbless parking spaces where obviously you'll have to have some sort of bumpers there and that, I think that actually goes to Mr. Dedeche's question.
Yep.
So that strikes me as a very useful compromise to have some non-handicap spaces that actually can act as handicap spaces under certain circumstances. And frankly, if you can come to some sort of agreement with the hotel next door on those 15 banked parking spaces where you can use them when things get lumpy, as I was saying before, that would be a very useful exercise, I think. All right, did you have any?
I do want to say one thing about the noise and while it may not appear to be an operations.
Hold on, Mr. Nichols wants to come up here.
Yep.
Use the microphone.
Otherwise Nora gets angry.
Got you, sorry.
And rightly, and rightly so.
I felt Nora from here, so I want.
While it may not appear to be an operations question, I assure you, this is something that I take a lot of pride in. I did not give you some of my credentials, but I'm a certified dementia practitioner and have been for several years. The design of the property actually takes into account Route 80 and the noise. The lower right hand corner of the community, that is the memory care neighborhood.
Yes.
Memory care neighborhoods are right now investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in ambient noise. Recent research in dementia has shown that ambient noise and consistent ambient noise is beneficial to prevent, a term called sundown, you may be, you may be familiar with it, maybe you're not, but it's increased agitation in residents and anyone who's, who's living with dementia. We have built an ambient noise right behind the community and there is no buffering there. As you move to the left of the community and the independent living community, that lower wing is a single loaded wing. So that hallway on the lower side where the, where the pointer is right now, there are no apartments. The apartments face the inner courtyard. So the evergreens are, and the echo chamber that you are concerned about will be buffered by the existing foliage, foliage that is there and anything that we planted additionally. So I did take into consideration, I'm working with our architect group, this, the Route 80, and I'm trying to leverage the sound, not worry about it as much, but I'm literally trying to use it in the operations to benefit the residents.
We were really talking about the courtyard itself.
Oh, yeah. And again, that's where.
That could be like an echo chamber.
Yes, it can. I will say, when investigating the property, I went down to the lower levels, maybe it was illegal, I don't know, but I was all the way down there with a decimal reader. I have several. And the decimals that were coming in there were around 90 to 92 at its highest, which is great for ambient noise and started to get muffled as I went based on the grading as I started to go up towards the left side. So I felt very comfortable that particular site moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Canziano?
Yeah, I just had a follow up question for Mr. Nichols on going back to Mr. Dedeche's comment on additional parking areas that may have a flush curb, ADA, et cetera. Where do you envision, like the assistant, the memory care is not going to have any cars as you pointed out, or residents' cars. And what about the assistant living portion? That's also on the east. You envision residents, assistant living residents having cars or?
Out of the 50 plus beds in assistant living, I only anticipate historically in my career, I would say maybe five residents will bring vehicles and maybe two will use them.
Okay.
So they will more than likely be parked on the right hand side. I do not anticipate many, if any, assistant living residents bringing their vehicles.
So the majority of the residents would, that would have a vehicle would be on the independent care, which makes sense, on the westerly side and that's the north, the west. And what about the southerly side?
That southern, that southern side will probably be reserved for employees.
Okay.
What I will say is while there are no reserved spots resident in apartment 100 here, there will be reserved spots for residents only. So residents only will be in the front, residents only will be on the left hand side. Anything on the right hand side of the rear will be for guesting staff.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions from members of the board. Any questions from members of the public of this witness on this testimony at this time? Or this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. Tom Carman, who is the project landscape architect.
Good evening.
Do you swear to affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas S. Carman, C-A-R-M-A-N. Address 200 Union Avenue, Riel, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Carman. Please describe for the board, tell the board where you work, what your position is, a little bit about your professional background and please highlight any licenses that you possess.
Sure. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1997. I have a degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I have appeared before numerous boards in New Jersey on similar applications and I have.
And you've accepted as a witness, as an expert.
I have, I have.
Mr. Chairman, we respectfully requested Mr. Carman be recognized as an expert in the area of landscape architecture.
Any questions by the board on this? So, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carman, please describe the landscape architectural aspects of the project for the board, if you will. Do you have any exhibits?
I do. This evening I have four different exhibits.
Why don't we get those pre marked? I think we're starting with A4, Laura. We are at.
A4.
A4. And just describe each one, if you would. Why don't you take the microphone up there, will you? Describe each one with a microphone.
He's got others he's marking.
Thank you. So what I have are four different exhibits. The two that I have up, the one on the left hand side, that's the overall landscape plan. It's identified as A4, it has today's date on it. And then the one on the right hand on the easel is A5 and this is the independent living courtyard plan. And I'll refer to the next two as later in my testimony.
Okay.
So this evening, what I'll do is I'll walk you through landscape improvements as well as the exterior recreation amenities and then also touch back on the monument So referring to A4, the interpaced parkway is up to the top and then you can see Route 80 down in the lower left. Richly detailed landscape plan is proposed includes a diverse and hardy palette of both native as well as ornamental plant material. Along the parking areas, the frontage as well as at the building foundation and the amenity spaces.
Want to use a pointer?
There's over 35 different varieties of plant material that create this diversity. There are deciduous trees that are proposed, deciduous trees that are proposed ringing the parking areas. We have honey locust, maple, oak, as well as some sweet gum. And then there are some ornamental trees that accent the landscape and the architecture. Dogwood, red bud, birch provides some seasonal interest. The foundation of the building is planted with both a mix of deciduous and evergreen material. We then layer in some perennials and ornamental grasses to provide a layered and textured effect. All the plant material that's proposed is hardy for the area and has been located based on sun and shade conditions. In Mr. Canziano's report, comment number four within there indicated that we should coordinate with the town forester specifically regarding some planting along Route 80. As just testified by the civil engineer, the plans, the landscape plans were submitted to the forester during the, for the tree removal permit. We did not get any feedback or comments from them, but we would be more than happy to take a look further at this specific area that I think we just heard members of the board expressing some concerns about noise from Route 80. And what I'd suggest is there are five deciduous trees that are located along there where the, where that cedar stockade fence is. And I think maybe what we do is we, being that there is some deciduous vegetation out there today existing along that right of way, we remove those five trees and we add a dense evergreen screen to, to really help that buffer the Route 80. Currently, the plans propose 177 trees, 111 of them are deciduous shade trees, 34 evergreen and 16 ornamental trees. All the plant material that's proposed is either native or adaptive. When I say adaptive, I'm referring to like deer tolerant plant material or drought tolerant plant material and although it may not be native, it's certainly not invasive. The Highlands Council, the letter that they put together, condition number two, recommended indigenous native species be used to the maximum extent feasible, which I feel that we're doing. It did indicate that a final landscape plan be resubmitted to them and we will, again, we can coordinate with the township forester and make sure that if there are any varieties that would be better suited to be switched out, we can do that. We are using a number of drought tolerant plant material and then also the irrigation system itself is what's called a smart system, so with a moisture sensor, kind of weather based, so it does conserve water. What I'll do now is I'll move to the second exhibit, exhibit A5. So this is an enlargement of the independent living courtyard. So if we look back at, on the overall plan, A4, the courtyard on the left hand side that I'm circling, this A5 drawing is an enlargement of that. Now, all three courtyards do also have a small water feature proposed. That's another element that helps to mitigate some, some sound, having that white noise within the courtyard. So very gracious patio space with some lounge seating, a fire pit, barbecue grilling counter with the shade structure. is an enlargement of that. Now, all three courtyards do also have a small water feature proposed. That's another element that helps to mitigate some sound, having that white noise within the courtyard. So very gracious patio space with some lounge seating, a fire pit, barbecue grilling counter with the shade structure, a trellis where the ornamental trees are, a open lawn panel that could be used for doing a night movie, and then a garden plot, a garden space that has some vegetable plots in it. You'll note a couple of hardscape patios, so any of the residential units that face on this courtyard at grade also have private patio spaces. I'm now going to move to the next two exhibits. This one is exhibit A2, and this is the assist, I'm sorry, A6, also dated today, and this is the assisted living and memory care courtyard. So this exhibit, the courtyard space at the top, this is an enlargement of the, that assisted living courtyard, also has kind of a lounge terrace space, again, a shade structure that has barbecue grill encounters, plenty of seating opportunities, that water feature that I spoke about, and then a walkway connecting up. Here we also have some private patio spaces for the residents who open up to this level. The last courtyard space is the one on the bottom of the sheet. This is the memory care. So in this one, we're seeing that it's enclosed by four sides of the building. There are two patio spaces that come right off of the corridor, and those have shade trellis to them, and then a meandering path links up both of these patio spaces with a central terrace space that has a shade structure as well. All the courtyards, lushly planted, include low-level bollard lighting, as you heard earlier. And then the last exhibit I want to mention is exhibit A7. This is the main entry planting and monument sign. So you heard earlier on Interpace Parkway, the entry drive coming in just on the east side of that, or on plan right, you can see the entry sign. We've done an enlargement of what that sign looks like. Material-wise, they complement the architecture using the same kind of stone that's used on the architecture, and then the logo shown there, the sign. Ten foot wide by five foot tall, meeting the ordinance requirements. And that really gets it over here. The one last thing I just want to point out on exhibit A5 is at the, at the terminus of the corridor for the independent living building, that's where the sidewalk comes out, takes you over to the dog run. It's that dog run, twenty by fifty, has a fence around it. It's synthetic turf. It's a canine turf specifically engineered for this kind of an application. It's a great amenity for the residents.
Is there a dog size limit, then, for twenty by fifty?
Typically, there is a limit on-
Operations again. Sorry, you brought it up, but it was up one of my questions, so.
There is a dog weight limit of fifty pounds, and there also is a limit to make sure the resident can care for that in their apartment.
That concludes my testimony.
Turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Members of the board have any questions in this testimony? Mr. Neely?
Is the Woodmont Carman sign lighted?
Yes, it is. There is a ground-mounted sign, a ground-mounted light that illuminates the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Von Aken?
Quickly regarding the species of trees, you know, I just would want to make sure you consider the potential risk of storm damage to trees when you're choosing your species. It's an area where we've had some proper problems in the past, so make sure they're hardy enough to withstand New Jersey winters.
Very good. We will. Thank you.
Mr. DiPiero, did you have any?
No, the three experts took care of my evergreen.
Okay. No, it's, I've been over there, and Route eighty is very noisy, and so you're going to have to try to do for your courtyards there some sound attenuation of some sort, in whatever form that takes. It's going to be-
Not too far from this development is Veterans Park. And on the back of Veterans Park, near Route eighty, is a picnic area. And I had the displeasure of being at that picnic area when people were trying to speak. And every time a truck went by or a motorcycle went by, we had to wait until that noise went past us. And so this is almost the same distance away from Route eighty as that picnic area was the reason for my concern.
It's a valid concern, and we will switch out those trees and study that area to the greatest extent.
And the stockade fence does help a little.
It does.
So.
Lots of textured surfaces.
Yes. Agreed.
Very good. Appreciate it.
Any other members of, yes, nor Mr. Pop?
Thank you. I know we've seen you online before, but I've finally seen your paperwork in front of me. It's very impressive, by the way.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You said you're planting one hundred and eighty trees? Did I get that number right?
One hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay. Close. And I'm self-checking, kidding. Rough estimate, how many are going to be taken away?
I actually do not know. There's five acres. It was not fully inventoried as to-
Okay.
Survey for trees.
All right. The moisture sensing sprinklers, does it actually work?
It's a weather-based system, so that way it's linked to online database, and it's pretty good.
Okay. And other properties have done this, they're successful?
Yes.
Because I've driven along Interpace Parkway a lot, and it's raining, and the sprinklers are on, and we're in drought conditions, so it's a pain to see it.
Right.
Okay. Hope it works. Thank you.
All right. Other members? Stewart, if you have any?
Yes. You had mentioned water features. Can you enlighten the board as to what they are?
Yes, they're a small basin that has like a bubbler kind of a fountain to it, just creating visual effect and some noise.
So it's not a big-
It's not-
Protruding, if that's the word.
It's not a big fountain that blows water or anything.
Okay.
Smaller scale.
I wasn't sure whether this was you. In terms of the sign, there are some lighting requirements that it was not clear how you, how you conform. So if you mind, if you don't mind, I'd just like to walk through those pretty quickly. The first one is that the monument sign shall be illuminated by no more than two floodlights per surface. Have you conformed, not conformed?
We conform with that.
Can you tell me how many?
One floodlight per side.
Okay. The lighting is supposed to be shielded, so as not to produce glare or offensive light off the property?
We will add that as a notation on the drawing.
Okay. I'm not sure that this is you or on the operational side, but there is a requirement that says, no sign shall be artificially illuminated after eleven PM or before seven AM unless the premises is occupied and attended. I'm not sure that this is really meant to be for this type of sign. It sounds more commercial, but do we have hours of illumination for the sign?
This is Mr. Nichols.
Because there's going to be twenty-four-seven operations and a twenty-four-seven staff, the plan is to have it illuminated twenty-four-
Twenty-four, that's fine. The sign is supposed to be marked with the name of the person, farmer corporation erecting and maintaining the sign. We'll comply?
Yes.
No sign shall be erected, painted, or composed of fluorescent or phosphorescent materials?
I think we've already indicated we comply with that from the engineer's testimony.
Must have missed that. I apologize. And lastly, no sign shall have more than five colors.
That was also testified to by the engineer. We'll comply with that as well.
Missed that, sorry. That is all I have.
Right, Mr. Sebel?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Mr. Canziano?
I don't know if this question's for the engineer. It's on the lighting in the courtyards or landscape architect. It appears the vast majority of the lights are the three-and-a-half-foot-high bollard lighting with very low light level. It's enough to light the sidewalk. Do you feel that that's enough lighting in the area for security and for folks, you know, trying, I guess they're using that courtyard from the parking area to walk through there? It just seems like a little bit of low lighting in that courtyard area.
Yeah, we're getting a minimum of point one in that area. It is a little bit dark. There's definitely going to be to add a few more bollard lights.
Yeah, I see you have, what, an eight-foot-high, couple old regular luminaires, about eight-foot-high, that maybe look at adding a few more of those just to supplement those bollard lights.
Yes, there are several of those in the patio area. That'll be more lighting.
Just take another look at that, just to make sure there's adequate lighting in that.
And from a security standpoint, every access door, every, including the patio door-
Has a standard security light?
No, not only has a security light, but will also have a security device that if it is opened at any time after eight PM, it will alert the staff.
Okay. Any objections, though, to looking at the lighting in that courtyard?
No, we'll, as a condition of approval, we'll look at that and coordinate with you on it.
We'll work with our professionals.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will do that.
All right. Anybody else on the board have any questions in this testimony at this time? Anybody from the public have any questions on this testimony from these fine gentlemen at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. Penkey. Mr. Carl Penkey, he's our traffic engineer with Langen Engineering.
Before we move on too long, I just want to say in the past, we've had a time limit as to how long we've gone for having professional testimony and the like. I don't know what the board is thinking here. Usually, we'd cut it off at, say, ten fifteen or something like that.
Okay. Well, we have three more witnesses, but they will be very brief, so we will do the best we can to meet whatever time limitations the board-
All right. Well, ten fifteen, no more professional, you know, if the board decides to continue beyond that.
That's up to the-
Yep. Understood.
To the board.
Mr. Penkey, thank you for your testimony. I'm just kidding.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony? Will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please?
Sure. For the record, my name is Carl with a K, Penkey, P as in Peter, E-H-N-K-E. My way of qualification, I'm vice president with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing and practicing and qualifying for this board in the past as an expert in traffic engineering.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, we ask that Mr. Penkey be recognized as an expert engineer?
Anybody have questions on this, on these qualifications? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Penkey. Can you briefly describe the traffic impacts and issues associated with this application?
Yes, certainly to be very brief, this use, residential, commercial use, is a very moderate traffic generator. Project during peak hours, we would expect to see generate less than twenty entering vehicles, twenty exiting vehicles during peak hour. The very low level of traffic that really will have no impact on the operations of the adjacent roadway system. We did have an opportunity to gather some traffic data at the Sonesta driveway, as well as some pre-COVID data. The last couple of years have been all difficult for us as traffic engineers, and we did run an analysis of the driveways just to check and confirm that they would operate well. I know you've heard levels of service. The driveways are projected to operate at B levels of service or better, exiting the driveways and A levels of service on the left turn in, very little queue and delay. I won't repeat the testimony of Mr. Sebel. I think he's done an adequate job of describing the access and circulation. I would just affirm as a traffic engineer that I believe the site circulation and access is well laid out. It's appropriate for the use, and in my opinion, the driveways will operate safely.
And points of ingress and egress will also operate safely.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you have any further testimony, Mr. Penkey?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I send it back to you and the board for questions of this witness.
Mr. Canziano, do you have?
Yeah, and I referred to my comment three on the traffic report, and it was misstated. The intersection with Cherry Hill Road and Interpace, not Route forty-six. Any objection to looking at that for compliance with any CCD and making any recommendations if that, this signage and striping need to be upgraded?
Between our property and Interpace Parkway and Cherry Hill Road?
Correct.
We can take a look at that.
And also just off the new proposed right-side driveway, and even on the existing easterly exiting driveway, I think, I don't see like a short, maybe fifty-foot length of the double yellow line striping maybe appropriate.
On the driveway?
On the driveways, on your property.
I'll review that with Mr. Sebel.
Okay. That would be my two comments.
Any questions by members of the board on this testimony? Mr. Von Aken?
Any concerns with the queuing over on the eastern side of the parking lot as it goes into the area that I guess is shared with the hotel area?
Yeah, not at all. When we ran the analysis, we've seen it wanted to park Q on that exit, so it's all well-contained and won't impact the internal circulation for the hotel, and will work well.
Okay.
Any other members of the board?
It's probably there. I just probably can't see it, but leaving, leaving your area, is there a stop sign between there and Sonesta Suites? And is there a yield sign on that side? How's that going to work? I think I see a stop line there.
There's a stop sign and a stop bar, yes.
And then how about on the Sonesta Suites side? Is there anything there that says yield or anything like that?
Coming out of Sonesta Suites?
With that in mind, I guess that wouldn't be-
That would be a problem.
Yeah.
Do we know if there's one there? Is there a stop sign on their side, too? Do we know?
There's one. It appears to be.
Okay.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions, or professionals? Do you have any question? Any members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Penkey. I'd like to call Mr. Kupersky.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please?
It's Mark Kupersky, K-U-D-E-R-S-K-I, two twenty-seven East Lancaster Avenue, Carmer, PA.
Thank you. Mr. Kupersky, can you describe your position and provide the board with any professional background very briefly, and educational background, any licenses that you possess?
Yes, I am a graduate from Drexel University, and I worked for Meyer Design, and I've been there for fifteen years, and I have testified in numerous times.
You're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed in New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask the board to-
Any questions on those credentials? Hearing and seeing none. Sir?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kupersky, can you please describe the architectural aspects of this project? Take the microphone with you, I guess, if you will. Do you have any exhibits?
This one exhibit is the only exhibit that was not included, which is the exterior rendering of the building.
So that would be A8, I think?
Make sure the microphone's on.
A8, correct.
Yeah.
Keep it under the lid.
Tap, tap the microphone?
There you go. Good.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
And that's A8. Can you describe that, please?
Yes, this is the exterior rendering of the front of the building here. This is the Port Boucher entrance, and mainly the view from the main drive lane entering this site.
Exterior rendering of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
And it does touch on the finishes. The exterior finishes will be hardy board siding, board embatten, and horizontal siding. There'll be stainless steel metal roof and asphalt shingles with stone all along the lower portions of the building, and composite trim. That's the architecture of the building. Quickly walk through the plans real quick. Quickly walk through the, the plans real quick, of the, the building.
Were those submitted to the rest?
These were all, I think they were, yes.
So we don't need them more?
Nope.
This is just the.
Just refer to the plans and sections that you're referring to, that's all.
This is, I'm gonna start from the lowest level and work my way up through the building. So this is the lowest level. This is the receiving area that was talked about in the back, and then this is the memory care court, the memory care wing, which is this back, you know, circular space. The red of the units, residential units, mainly studios and a couple shared. And then this yellow, the yellow, which is going to consist through the building, is common space for the residents. These are all common spaces. And this is the courtyard, which is contained for memory care. Memory care is also contained operation, so the residents can't wander off out of this area. It's delay egress components, and it's, they're safe in this, this quadrant of the building. And it's a one-story piece of the building. Going up to the next level, which would be the main level of the entrance. So this is the, the main floor. Again, this is the memory care below, main entrance in the front. This side of the building, from, from this whole portion over, is all the assisted living licensed area. From this point over is all the independent living portion of the building. Again, the color coding, all the blues are mainly the IL units, from one bedrooms up to one bedroom with, with a den and two bedrooms, all on this quadrant. And then this side is the assisted living, mainly studios, small and large studios, a few one bedrooms and a few two bedroom units. And then all the yellow is common spaces, it's a variety of, there's pubs, there's dining, pool and salon, our steam room, formal dining, fitness. And this is the main kitchen for the facility located in the middle of the building. Going up a floor from there, this floor here.
Just refer to the plan that you're referring to.
So this is the second floor. Again, this side is the assisted living, everything stacks, so again, there'll be some additional studios and the same as the lower floor. This is all the same thing as below, stacking again, and all the independent living is on this side of the building. Middle core is the common spaces, which has some dom simulation, an IL pub, theater for IL. And this is the wellness vitality for residents. And then these, these little, these are the patios. All the units for assisted living and independent living will have their own patio as well. And then going up to the last floor, this is the third floor, and again, everything units-wise stacked, so it's the same kind of units running up through the building. Assisted living on this side, independent living. The middle will have performing arts, rooftop dining, and then activities for, and theater for IL, and beauty salon on this floor. We kind of space the common spaces up through the building for the residents. This is the, we talked about this too, this is the buffering of this wing, this is the corridor. Units are facing inbound, not out towards the highway. That is, and then we have exterior elevations. Again, I touched on the exterior finishes. This is the, we've used around, around the building. And this is the main front. Again, a variety of finishes on the exterior. And we try to carry the architectural components all around the building, so it's not just in the front. They do carry all the way around the building. There was a question about the port de chair height. We're gonna have, we can have a clear height of fourteen feet on the air, so if you have any kind of vehicles going in and out.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Send it back to you and the board for any questions.
Do you have any questions by members of our board? Yes, Mr. Mueller.
Any solar panels or?
We, we are not planning on solar. It's, it's a challenge with the square footage, and there will be some, some equipment on the roof. You just don't get enough square footage for solar.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board, Mr. Polatano?
I'm sorry, probably operations again. I didn't know there was a, a bar in there. You have two different bars in here?
There is bars, but they are not, there's not a, they don't sell alcohol, it's just a, they provide.
Oh, not sell alcohol?
It's not selling it, no.
Just giving it out? So can anybody go there? I live, I live closest to there, so I was giving it out, I mean. Can't drink, okay, I can't go there?
They're entertainment bars.
They're entertainment bars.
Yeah.
Why don't you use that stuff?
Any other members of the board? All right, any of our professionals?
No.
Yes? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd refer to you. We have Jason Schooling here, who's our expert planner, who can provide testimony on variances. Sometimes you've heard a lot of the testimony. I'd refer to you and Mr. Weiser, whether you want to hear testimony from the planner or not, on variances, or whether you feel that.
Well, we absolutely want to hear him, and we also want to hear his opinion on whether certain things are variances or not.
As I was saying, Mr. Schooling.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jason Schooling. My address is 1450 Highway 34 in Walden, New Jersey.
Please spell your last name.
S C H O O L I N G.
And Mr. Schooling, can you describe for the board your professional title, where you work, and your education, any professional licenses that you possess?
Sir, I graduated in 2006 from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a BS in Civil Engineering. I have a professional engineering license, as well as a professional planning license in the state of New Jersey. I work at Paul Salkowski and Sartor, although I'm known as PSNS. I've worked professionally for the last sixteen years in the capacity of an engineer.
Okay, and you've been accepted by boards in both of those capacities?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, we offer Mr. Schooling as a professional planner.
Anybody have any questions on his qualifications? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Schooling. If you can describe the variances being sought, let's just hold for a moment the, the last one, whether it's a.
I can address that now, counselor, because I did.
Oh, all right, let's wait, let's, let's address that now. So it sounds like you've looked it up. Go ahead.
So Mr. Weiser's report referenced section 43027, I'm sorry, 275T, which is the general design requirements for the township. There's a section that does talk about prohibited parking in the front yard, but there is also an exception that says unless specifically authorized elsewhere. That then takes you to the ROL zone, which is 430184B, which does permit parking in the front side and rear yard, subject to setback requirements. And one of the requirements that's not being satisfied is that thirty foot requirement, so you did call out that variance, but I do not believe the variance for the front yard is actually required.
Right, sounds like a wager.
I don't think it's anything.
It's not anything, as we were saying. Okay, great.
You still have the setback requirement, which was originally called out in the report, so.
Terrific. Thank you, counselor, good work.
So examination, examination of the site plans, there's one variance that was requested, and that's from ordinance section 2019:18 for steep slope disturbances that are exceeding the limits. These are exceeding the limits in all three of the steep slope ranges, so there's within the range of fifteen to nineteen point nine nine percent slope. There's a proposed disturbance of fifty seven point six percent, where thirty five percent is allowed. Within the slope range of twenty to twenty four point nine nine percent, there's a disturbance of forty seven point four percent, where twenty five percent is allowed. And with the slope range of twenty five percent plus, there's a proposed disturbance of twenty three point six percent, where fifteen percent is allowed. Additionally, in, within the planner's letter dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, there were three additional variances that were identified. One was from ordinance section 430-13A for accessory structure, that's the proposed dog run. That's proposed within a side yard, where an accessory structure is only permitted within a rear yard. There is also a variance identified from ordinance section 430184B for a parking lot, proposed within thirty feet of a street, of a street lot line. And this is from Route 80, and there was, the last one is identified for ordinance section 2019:19 for a minimum driveway width of twenty five feet within the right, within the right of way, where a minimum of twelve feet is permitted, and a maximum driveway width of fifty feet within the right of way, where a maximum of twenty four feet is permitted. I can go through.
Why don't you go through the, the, yeah, go through the variances for each one, and whether or not you believe a C1 or C2 variance applies, and the brief analysis for each?
Right, certainly. So these variances should be considered for approval under NJSA 40:55D70, both C1 and C2, as such actions will relieve peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties and exceptional and undue hardship for the developer of the property, resulting in strict application of the zoning ordinance. As well as for a C2, for granting of these variances would advance the purposes of planning and the benefit of these deviations substantially outweigh the benefits. The MLUL definition for peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties and exceptional and undue hardship includes, by reason of exceptional topographical conditions or physical features uniquely affecting a specific piece of property. As the engineer and traffic engineer both testified to, there's a need to have two access on the property, both for proper circulation, as well as in order to have emergency access off of Interpace Parkway, instead of having to go all the way around through the hotel property. And there, the topographical conditions that are unique to this property is that the majority of the steep slopes exist along the frontage of Interpace property, and is not feasible to have an access point off of Interpace, Interpace Parkway without exceeding the allowable steep slope within this area. So in order to alleviate this as much as possible, the applicant is proposing to have a proposed retaining wall along the driveway in this location to limit the amount of steep slope disturbance, as well as stabilizing any, all of the steep slopes that have been disturbed with both vegetation and with erosion control blankets. So in addition to that, there's also the C2 variances that are being requested, and I believe that the granting of this variance will help promote the following purposes of the MLUL. First, A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. On their, apologies. One of the variances is stating that there is a driveway width that is in the excess of twenty four feet. And this is at the location where, in order to construct the thirty five foot curb radii for access off of Interpace Parkway. And the reasons why this is needed to be constructed is to allow for fire access, emergency vehicle access, in the event of an emergency on the property. As well as, as the engineer testified, there is a curb island that helps direct egress from the property to be right turn only out of the property, because there isn't adequate site distance to have a left turn out of the, out of the project area. So by allowing, by constructing this, by allowing the variance, it will allow for access for fire vehicles, it will allow for proper egress out of the property, which will promote both public safety and general welfare of the lot. The second area is B, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. By replacing the steep slopes in the front of the property with erosion control matting and with retaining wall, as well as collecting and detaining a great deal of the runoff that would have otherwise been directed toward Interpace Parkway. We are reducing the amount of runoff, we're, we're also reducing the velocity of the runoff that will be going to Interpace. So this will decrease the amount of potential flooding that may occur in the roadway. In addition to this, as I previously stated, by allowing these variances, it will also allow for emergency access from Interpace Parkway onto the property, which will increase the firefighting capacity of the site. The third item here is for I, to promote a desirable visual environmental, a visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The, the wall, the tiered wall in the front, that is required in order to disturb, in order to limit the amount of disturbance of steep slopes, will, is going to be landscaped. So that wall and landscaping will provide some measure of buffering or screening from Interpace property, from Interpace Parkway to the proposed facility. Additionally, there was, one of the variances that is being requested is for the driveway in the rear that's connecting back to the rear parking area. That is going to be only twelve feet from the Route 80 right of way line. This is less than the requirement of being thirty feet setback off of the rear property line. And there is going, in addition to maintaining the, in, sorry, in addition to maintaining the existing vegetation within that twelve feet, in order to help alleviate that, in order to help compensate for that, there's also going to be a proposed six foot cedar stockade privacy fence. So it'll provide additional screening and buffering in that area to help offset the lack of the thirty foot setback from that property. And the last item there is for L, to encourage senior citizen community housing construction. This one should be fairly self-explanatory. By granting of the variances, it allows for the, us to construct, for them to construct the limited continuum care facility to encourage senior citizen housing within the township of the person. And look at the negative criteria. There's not much significant negative effects of granting of any of these variances. By granting of the variance for steep slopes, there's not going to be any detriment as far as additional flooding or additional erosion. The erosion control matting should help to reduce any velocity impacts. And the wall and collection of additional, and collection and detention of additional stormwater will reduce the amount of flow and reduce the flooding to the roadway. For the variance, to construct accessory structure, the dog run within a side yard, even though it's going to be the side of the building, there's eighty foot, or greater than eighty foot distance between the dog run and the property line in this location, and, which will be entirely consisting of existing vegetation that is going to be maintained and left alone in that location. So it will be properly screened, it is not going to be right up against the property line, it is much farther than any side yard setback within the municipality. For the variance for thirty feet from the street line, this is the only one that may be construed as being a potential negative impact, because it is going to be closer than what is permitted. It's going to only be twelve feet, as opposed to the allowable thirty feet. But this is going to be offset by having that six foot high cedar stockade fence, which will provide additional buffering and screening in this area to help alleviate the, whatever lost vegetation or trees that were previously in that location, and with the driveway being closer to the property line. So looking at the totality of the proposed improvements, I find that the benefits of the proposed design significantly outweigh any detriment. As such, actions advance the statutory purposes of planning, are clearly within the public interest, and will not substantially impair the proposed, the purpose of zoning ordinance, and would otherwise result in the practical difficulties for the applicant. Therefore, it is my opinion as a professional planner that the board can grant these variances without any issues.
Any further testimony? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Send it back to the board for any questions of this witness.
I have no objection to any of the justifications that were just put on the record.
All right, any members of the board have any questions of this testimony, Mr. Polatano?
Um, I, I think it's mentioned, are these, this part of planning or not, but are these age restricted units?
They're seniors. Uh, Mr. Nichols?
That's operations again?
Mr. Nichols, you've moved so far, my crew is here, huh?
Yes.
Why don't you get, just here, just. So what's the, it's, they're age restricted units, correct?
They are age restricted units, correct.
And what's the age restriction?
Sixty-two and over.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, real quick then, if there's two bedrooms, and who, is that for like grandchildren come sleep over? I mean, how's, how's that work? I mean, in your other, other buildings that you have?
Oftentimes, that second bedroom is utilized as an office, or just extra space for the resident who wants to bring stuff from their apartments. This is a psychological move, where a lot of residents are coming from homes that are two thousand, three thousand square feet large, and they look at an apartment and don't see the entirety of the community, so they want to bring their stuff.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Any other members have questions of this testimony at this time? Actually, Mr. Inglosino, I have, I have a legal question here, and that is, what is the enforceability of an age restriction?
Well, typically, there's a deed restriction.
Deed restriction.
Or a deed restriction.
I mean, we saw a few years ago that those kind of deed restrictions were kind of, I'll say, adjusted by the legislature.
No, once there's a deed restriction in place.
Once it's in place, okay.
And I'm sure that'll be a condition of approval.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because I've. Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because I've, I've seen things changed when I thought they were pretty set in stone.
No, if there's a deed restriction, that'll be in place, and it'll be to the satisfaction of the board attorney.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. Uh, I have, I do have a question about this is-
Excuse me, I just have one statement of clarity as we were talking about it. Sorry for saying this, sixty-two and over is assisted living. Independent living is fifty-five and over.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Is there an age limit for the dogs? Sorry.
Is that human years or dog years?
Good question.
The steep slopes, a, a lot of this has to do with the steep slopes. The primary purpose of our steep slope ordinance is to try and, uh, maintain the topographical integrity of the ancient, his, Precipiny, uh, region, our geography and so forth. This happens to be in a spot that I'm not particularly, I don't find particularly interesting in preserving myself, uh, but it's still important from a planning point of view. You went through that, uh, justification for adjusting the, the topography, because this is a pretty big, uh, I hate to use the word violation, but this is a pretty sizable, uh, intrusion into our, uh, ordinance on the, the, the critical slopes, as it were. And, but I, since I personally don't think these, this location makes them critical, because we use the word critical in our, in our ordinance, uh, but they are steep slopes. I'd just like to have you expand a little bit on how you see this as being, uh, appropriate in this location, and how it doesn't hurt the original intent of the critical slopes, uh, ordinance.
One of the reasons why the number is so high as well in this area is because it's such a small percentage of the actual site. Um, I think I have the numbers here, that the steep slopes make up six point two percent, oh, well, they make up twelve point six percent, and the disturbance is only in six point two percent of the entire property. So it's because such a small percentage of the property is steep slopes, that disturbing any of those areas ends up being a very high percentage.
Fair enough.
So it's not that the entire property is steep slopes and we're disturbing, and, yeah, and having a great impact on the integrity of the critical slopes in the property, it's because there's such a small percentage on the lot itself.
Okay, but that makes complete sense to me. So, any other members of the, the board have any further questions? Any members of the public have any questions of this testimony at this time hearing and seeing none? Uh, counselor?
Mr. Chairman, before ten fifteen, we have completed our, uh, our testimony with all of our, our professionals.
All right. You want me to ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak in opposition to this at this time, or?
Or make supportive comments.
Or make supportive comments, exactly. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? To provide, uh, opposition to this, uh, application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Anybody wish to speak in support of this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question on Mr. Inglosino. Earlier on this evening, you mentioned the affordable housing component. Does that apply only to the independent living units, or does that get proportioned out?
No, just to the, uh, just to the, the, the ten percent, um, Medicaid requirement for the-
Independent.
For the assisted living.
For the assisted living.
For the assisted living, so that's just ten percent for that portion of it.
Thank you.
Does our ordinance, uh, require that they meet it for the independent living as well?
No.
No? Okay, just, I want to make sure you've, you've agreed you're going to live with all of our ordinances, that you're not getting variances from anyway, so if that turned out to be true, that-
That's correct.
That would be dealt with.
That's correct.
All right, um, well, I guess this closes the evidentiary portion of the hearing at this time, unless you wish to sum.
I'll spare you a summary, Mr. Chairman, since you heard it all in one night. Uh, I just wanted, on behalf of the applicant, thank the board and the board's professionals. Uh, do want the board to know that their professionals were very thoughtful and issued thoughtful, um, and appropriate reports, and we did the best we could to, uh, address those concerns in as efficient a way as possible, which is why some of the testimony, um, I wouldn't say it was long, but, but did incorporate their, their comments. And, uh, I also want to thank Nora, who's been terrific in terms of scheduling and getting information over to us, uh, immediately. We appreciate that as well.
All right, well, then this closes the evidentiary portion of the, the meeting at this time. We have several things we need to deal with. The first is, I have to find out if anybody here has any comments on this application at this time that they'd like to make.
I do.
Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you. Uh, I, I just want to say, I believe this is a good, uh, location for, uh, this sort of operation. Very happy to hear how the, how the operation works, thank Commissioner Nichols for that. Uh, I do have concerns about the amount of tree loss. Uh, you think you said over five acres of trees, and you're only replacing a hundred and seventy-seven of them? I'm, I'm hoping and praying there are no endangered species back there, since you don't have an ecologist on, uh, to testify to that. Uh, it doesn't affect any homeowners in the area, which I'm, I'm happy about. Uh, traffic should be minimal, and I know, noticed no impact on the schools, so I, uh, will be voting, voting in favor of this.
All right, anybody else have any comments on this?
Well, I, I'd just like to add what, um, Mr. Napolitano said, uh, being the mayor of this township eight, going on to nine years, we really haven't had any type of movement like this with regards to age-restricted memory care. And, um, as he said, it doesn't affect any residential areas whatsoever, and this is very positive for the township, because I can tell you firsthand, uh, we have a large senior population here in Precipiny, and, um, now maybe they have somewhere else to go, um, other than moving out of, out of the township. Um, yes, of course, there was other sites, you know, deemed that I just felt weren't beneficial, I wasn't on that board, but, uh, this application here is, uh, is a one for Precipiny.
Mr. Dedich, you had a-
Yeah, I mean, the, Mr. Mayor said everything I wanted to say, but I would just add a couple of things. It's a great project, uh, for the township as well as the community, um, and I'm fully in support of this project, so, thank you.
All right, um, now, we have, do we have any conditions that we wish to include in any resolution? Why don't you go through the mentioned, uh, conditions?
It'd be my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, I have a few. Um, the first is to provide the, uh, results of the LOI from DEP, and comply with any recommendations made therein. I don't believe we had testimony regarding the sidewalk variance or waiver requirement, counselor? Um, there was comments about attempting to have the sidewalk connect to the end of the building. Um, however, I think the board should, uh, I think at this point, uh, grant that design waiver if it so chooses, and then have the, uh, board of professionals, with your professionals, attempt to work that out. I know there was comments regarding the steps not being ADA compliant. The board understanding that, I think it's better that the board address it via waiver at this point, and, uh, put it on the record as such, if, if that's going to be part of the relief. Provide signage for the fifteen parking spaces for the Sonesta Hotel. Comply with the engineering memorandum. Uh, I think there was no specific exclusions, it was going to be the totality of the memorandum. Uh, comply with the, uh, water department correspondence.
Well, I think on the water department-
They're going to work with them.
We'll, we'll work with them. Uh, I think we have a difference of opinion, uh, with them on, on the existing permitting and how long that lasts, but we'll work with them on that. I don't know if there was really anything in that letter for us to comply with, it was just an observation.
Understood, okay.
There were one or two things that, um, and I'm going to call up the engineer real quick, Mr. Sepelli, that we did, um, politely push back on in some of the, uh, in some of the reports. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Sepelli to-
There was the, uh, the storm rainfall quantity that we used to hire-
Can you just point out the number in the report, in the page?
Sure.
Uh, the paragraph number in the page?
I still say we should have a discussion on that one. We want to make sure it's in compliance with the current standards.
So-
So you agree to work, you agree to work with our professionals on making sure it meets the standards, and that, I, I don't know that we need to go beyond that.
What we can do, counselor, is we often have a condition of approval where the, um, board engineer is permitted to make infield de minimis changes at his own discretion, and require any additional escrow review for that, and the board can then defer to Mr. Canjiano with regard to those kinds of field changes.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And I think that's appropriate for-
That's appropriate, and, and that would apply to his comments and the report, many of which were, were addressed, we just didn't go through them.
Understood.
And we understand their approach, and we understand why you did it, we just want to make sure that we're, we're complying with the standards as they are today.
I, I, that's fine, I agree with Mr. Legana's approach-
Thank you.
-in that regard.
Is there any other specific ones that are objectionable?
I, I think in light of what we just discussed, I don't think we need-
I think all of them kind of fall within those, with those in those categories, thank you. Uh, so the, that's going to be out. Um, submit the landscaping plans to Township Forester for any additional comments. Uh, add evergreen trees near the Route eighty, uh, which is going to be adjacent to the assisted living, uh-
No, the, the long-
Sorry.
The courtyard.
Courtyard.
Courtyard, and the, uh, independent living.
Correct, independent living, I'm sorry. I just had near Route eighty, but I think we all know what we're talking about, but it was by the two, um, block, try to block some sound.
To the west, to the west side of the-
Yeah, and we'll work with Mr. Canjiano on the, uh, some increased lighting.
Correct, okay. Hidden in the courtyard area.
Yes.
Um, and then provide some striping at the ingress egress, some double yellow striping in that area. And mainly, I think, was for, uh, both ingress egress points, um, proposed ingress egress points. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Canjiano, is that-
Well, and, uh, we have the additional, the addition of some flush curbs, uh, sort of, uh-
Yeah, the flush curbs.
Um, accessible, a little bit more of an accessible route. Doesn't have to be fully compliant with the ADA standard.
Right, and you'll be working with the engineer, I guess, on the-
Yes, yes.
-on the location and the quantity and stuff like that.
Yes.
Very good.
Um, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to exchange the link fence with privacy fence along Route eighty.
The one section.
The one section, we'll add the sidewalk and crosswalk connection to the hotel.
Yep.
We discussed, uh, there was, there was that, plus the sidewalk all the way around.
Yeah, it was kind of together, correct.
that, that falls under the category of discussing, Mr. Canjiano, Pollard's.
Any other members of the board remember any conditions that we discussed that should be in here? I think that's pretty complete there. Anything else we need to, all right. Do I hear a motion of approval with all of these conditions? Mr. Neely?
A motion to approve application number twenty-two point five-two-nine, Woodnot Senior Living LLC, seventy-nine Interpace Parkway, Lot one thirty-six point zero-one, Lot one, Zone ROL, preliminary and final major site plan with C-variance, major soil moving permit to construct a three-story, one-hundred-and-fifty-unit senior living building, and with the conditions enumerated by our board attorney and Mr. Canjiano.
Second. I'm sorry, I should have waited for you.
No, no, that's fine. Uh, Nora, what'd you call the roll, please?
Vario.
Yes.
Dedich.
Yes.
Piero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Um, my client looks forward to, uh, being an even better part of this community, so appreciate it.
Good job in working through that, everybody. Now-
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I've heard one. Do I hear a second? Does anybody want to stay? Second. I don't know.